I would also just like to mention our very invested partners. The very invested partners partnership is the highest sponsorship level that the HBA has and it allows the HB to put on these candidate forms. So, thank you to Lemke Home Improvement, to Bell Bank, and to David, to Radiant Homes for their support as a very invested partner. So with that, also, I should mention, I think we are recording this, is that right? So, we, just a heads up that it is being recorded so we can share it with our members afterwards for those that don't, aren't able to make it. Now, what I'd like to do is take just a second and introduce, and I'll look for who's not chewing. We, but we'd like to come around the room and introduce ourselves, and if you'd mentioned your name, your company, and then how you're involved with the HBA. Matt, you look ready to go?
I pause this.
Yeah.
Matt is with West Brom State Agents, and I'm a part of the Public Issues Committee.
Toby Christensen, Camera Plus, After Construction in Morehead, so a business owner in Morehead, president of Morehead for forty years. Been involved in the Homestead Association in numerous capacities, in the foundation, a chair, currently at the Health Land Trust, former chairman of that. I'm Rick Hughes.
I'm Nancy Kelly, I own Labor Masters in Fargo, currently the vice president of the Homestead Careful Nation.
Hi, I'm Joyce Goldstein with Design Direction, and I'm currently serving on the Board of Directors and the liaison to events today.
I'm Mike Lemke of Lemke Stairs, a board resident, worked in business for twenty-five years, and the treasurer on board directors for the HBA.
Trent Garretts with the Cass Clay Community Land Trust on the Public Issues Committee, as well as a Morehead resident.
Sam McDonald, Cass Clay Community Land Trust and Public Issues Committee.
Wonderful. So, thank you to our members for being here today to be engaged, and thank you again to all of you. So, I think to keep it simple, we'll start with Ward One, because I want to keep track, and we'll take turns. So, and I apologize. Okay, beautiful. If you would like to begin.
Well, thank you all for having me here today and extending an invitation to all of us for this very important discussion on housing. Myself, the last five years, I've been working with affordable housing with the community and Morehead specifically to have that affordable housing for families, working families, and also stable jobs. I've been a longtime Morehead resident, family was resettled in the area twenty-five years ago. Graduated at Spud, I went to Concordia, and worked in a variety of sectors, but I've always advocated for individuals, especially for housing, that's the core to the family and the community to help help these safe neighborhoods. Unfortunately, over the past few years, I've realized that there are barriers, including education and resources for families to obtain that, and especially when it comes to accessible housing for individuals that have different disabilities. So, you know, working collectively in a partnership with builders, with the city, with different resources is really important to address those concerns. And affordable housing, providing, you know, housing stability, quality of affordable housing. I worked in two different sectors over the past five years, one with a private landlord that did not, you know, raise concerns with the tenants, and one did. When I was eighteen years old in high school, my parents were going to buy a house, and I helped facilitate that because they didn't have the language skills to do that. And in 2008, there was collaboration between the state, city, and federal level to be able to build houses for families, and we were fortunate enough to be a part of that because, you know, home was a really distant dream, but with those collaborations, we were able to achieve it. So, that's a little bit about me, and I look forward to, you know, discussing issues that come up within the city regarding housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Introducing myself, so I'm Ryan Nelson, I'm a candidate for First Ward in Morehead, so that's obviously the north side of Morehead. I've been a longtime Morehead resident for well over thirty years. And I've lived in, most of that time was in, have been in the north ward. Most recently, I must say that, what I refer to as the Old Toll Bridge area. My background, I come from a lifelong public service. So, I've been working for government since I was sixteen years old, I was mowing the grass at Morehead Parks at sixteen, and working at the sports center when Morehead owned the sports center at the time. I worked my way through college, and most of my career spent in law enforcement, I had a little over twenty years total as a law enforcement officer in our community, retired. I'm pretty young to be retired officially, but I retired from that career after twenty years, and I feel with the Morehead Police Department, I worked as a patrol officer, a detective for many years, and retired there as a patrol sergeant, and now I'm in my new career over at MSUM as the Director of Public Safety, who are about, about three and a half years now. And so, I've had a lifelong service in, in public safety, law enforcement, obviously. That's one of my platforms, I, you know, strongly support of, of public safety, law enforcement needs in our community, also, you know, the basic needs of maintaining our city's infrastructure, roads, that kind of thing. Happy to see the Twenty-first Street underpasses is essentially done, I know there's still some driving supply closures, we all get it, but that'll be done, done soon, but the next thing is also moving forward with ID-11 Street underpass and being able to move around town. So, I, I just love Morehead, I want to serve in this capacity, this is something I've been wanting to do for a number of years, I just couldn't do that as an employee of the city, and now that I've landed in my next career, feel grounded there, I think it's time for me to give this a try. So, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Heather Niesemeyer, I have lived in the Fargo-Morehead area almost my entire life. I chose to move to Morehead because of the opportunity afforded my family and I. We've been in the Morehead area for just under eight years, and it was actually a house that was close to schools and parks that drew us to that area, and school opportunities from my son that made Morehead whole. But it's a wonderful community. My partner and I work at MSUM, and we raise a SBU, and it's a wonderful community feel. It is a safe place, and I believe in the community engagement that I've been able to engage in as the city council member for Ward Two for the last eighteen months. And I'd like to continue that service, and that's why I am on the ballot in November. My advocacy has been for decades, I have been working on healthy communities with working on recapping lunch throughout the Fargo-Morehead and Northern Cass communities. I have been fundraising money for school lunches. You may know me as a PTAC in your schools, I work in community gardens in Morehead. I do a variety of advocacy because I believe that getting out and making connections with families, but also communities, because multi-generational discussions and community building is really important. Having safe spaces in our homes, but getting outside of those homes and being proud of the land that those homes are built on, and building community in those areas is really important to me. And we can, we have fostered that in Morehead, but continuing to do that is really important in the work that I have been able to do in the city, and I continue, I wish to continue to do that. So, thank you again for having us here today, I look forward to your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm Deb White, I'm currently representing Ward Three, finishing up my first term. I just want to say, this is such an exciting time for Morehead, we are seeing growth beyond what we've seen in years. Clay County is the fastest growing county outside of the Twin Cities, and all of that is really exciting, but it also creates some challenges. So, we know that we have a workforce shortage, we have a lack of, we don't have enough affordable housing for childcare, we see increased strain on our infrastructure and our public safety. And so, we've been working on making inroads in those areas, but we still have so much to do. So, just to give you a few examples, I serve on the Economic Development Authority, and one of the things that we did this year is, we worked with Derek LaPointe, you know, as a leader of our, of our EDA to coordinate with some of our partners in the community to find out how we can improve our economic development incentives. And surprisingly, this isn't something that we've done in a while, but really needed to look at it and see how we can change things to better foster growth within our community and make sure that we are being responsive to our partners' needs. So, that was just one of the things that, that we started to do, and something that we should continue to do more periodically to make sure that we're doing best with our, to foster growth in our community. One of the things I'm particularly interested is looking at how we can incentivize development in some of our older neighborhoods. I think we need to have a good balance, I'm fortunate, I'm in Ward Three, so I'm all along the eastern corridor on the south side of Morehead, or excuse me, western corridor along the river. And so, I have the newer neighborhoods, but I also have older neighborhoods, and I think having that balance of investing in both, making sure that we are bringing new people to live in our downtown area and making homeownership more affordable. So, even things like looking at how we can have creative partnerships with places like the Community Land Trust is really important. We now have a very exciting and ambitious downtown development plan, and our comprehensive plan that will help to further spur investment in Morehead and increase the quality of life for people who choose to live and work in Morehead. And then the other really exciting thing, of course, is what we're seeing in downtown, with the downtown plan. And I think our Library and Community Center will be a great example of how we have that public-private partnership where we have our skin in the game, but we really want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support our community partners to further invest in Morehead.
Wonderful, thank you. So, everyone has served in a elected position yet, but served in some sort of maybe public service position? So, give us an example of what public service achievement you're most proud of, or something that would be to the equivalent of that, where community service oriented. And Ryan, we'll start with you, and then we'll go all the way down to Deb and then back to Seattle. And this is one minute, right? Okay.
Well, thank you, Bryce. When I think of a public service achievement, I reflect back on just the years of service and the respects and the connections that I've made over the years and lots of different people and organizations across our community. So, you know, there isn't a group or organization that I haven't been able to work with or sit and listen to, hold a conversation. We may not come down to the same, you know, police or something like that, but it is just collaborating, showing those connections, those resources. At the beginning, Bryce, you talked about the HBA being a resource for community leaders. I took a note of that because I was looking for, looking for that from the HBA, I'm glad to hear that is one of the sources. So, I'm looking to make those connections and achieve that, that relationship going forward if I did, so, thank you.
Wonderful.
I serve on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. That's one of my service assignments for the city council. And the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is a conglomeration of city, township, and Clay County individuals that work on Clay County solid waste. And we are building a resource recovery center just north of Aldi, if you shuffle in Morehead. It's just down fifteen, and it is an outstanding resource center, it's on seventeen acres of land. It's a wonderful opportunity, and working in government is a team sport, right? You can't do it alone, and there are lots of vendors working together to build that space. And while working with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we've had the opportunity to work on the land that that building is on, and the city of Morehead is caring for the land that the county owns, and the buildings that the county will own. And in engaging, the city of Morehead is, I put forth in January, a climate emergency declaration. And many of the best practices towards working towards city resilience and best practices to take care of our environment. We have been able to, as the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, put forward a request to the planting and the grass use, and the opportunity is to use no irrigation system on that land, to use low-mowed grass plantings, and to even utilize some of the space for native planting and be long to use them as an example in that space, where although it will be mostly filled with buildings, it's an opportunity to use the space of intergovernmental work and collaboration for education.
Thank you. Yeah.
I think the biggest thing that's been the underlying theme for all of my public service has been to make Morehead's city government more open and responsive to our community. And sometimes that small thing, I had a guy, Dr. Krebs, who's in my ward, who needs to go for dialysis every week, and this winter, he couldn't get his truck back down the street because there was too much snow and some courteous students parked down the street, and he has my home neighbor was able to give me a call, and I have to say, well, the work, let me get down the road. So, sometimes it's things like that. Other times, it's things like big projects, like we've got an exciting project that Unplated is doing where they've taken down the old Days Inn, a blighted property, and are now working on creating new housing there. They started this right as we see huge increase in building costs. And so, it's important that when things like that happen, that we are responsive, that we're working with our community partners to say, hey, we're with you, we want to help you weather the storm. And so, if that means you're going to have to delay a little bit, or if that means you need to modify the project, we need to be flexible so that we can continue to work together. And sometimes it's other things, like, you know, when we are working with Chamber of Commerce and lobbying together, you know, going down to the Twin Cities and working with our legislators to try to do things like change regulations on frostboarding and look at some of the things that we can do to make sure that we're more competitive. So, those things, and really, again, it all ties down to working and listening to our partners and the community and seeing how we can work together to make Morehead better.
All right, thank you, and the HBA, the rest.
I know, yeah, absolutely. I make sure, yeah.
We appreciate that, but homeowners, future homeowners, so appreciate that very much.
So, over the course of my life, I realized that I could be active in the community and do outreach and educate individuals, that really ignited a passion for me to be able to do that and be a resource for my community, and Morehead is changing. There's several diverse communities, and I have been able to connect with those communities, whether it be filling the labor shortage that's needed, whether it's be issues within their community, their neighborhoods, when it comes to that, just having to be able to be a liaison that organically I was able to do when people were able to approach me and do outreach with me in different communities. Other work that I've done includes really helping facilitate gaining those resources and understanding within the community. I've worked within different community gardens, because the gardens do bring people together, and they've been able to do EFL classes and that adult education, and really working with the youth. Currently, in my capacity at, in GSU Inclusive Recruitment, it's really about mobilizing people to better themselves through employment, community engagement, and getting quality, stable shelter and housing. That's really has been my focus.
Thank you. Wonderful. So, another, this is another example we'd like to hear about. An initiative that you've worked on in the past that wasn't as successful as you'd liked, and if you think there's still ability to make that successful if you are elected to the council. So, and Heather, start with you.
Wasn't as successful. We have no examples. I can think of one that I can share.
Or even something you're currently working on, sorry.
There are a few that have been, like, behind closed doors.
Oh.
So, I, I would say that downtown Morehead development is, is a good example, one that has taken a long time to sort of come around, and perhaps may or may not have come about particularly as successfully as one would have wished. I think when I was going knocking for other candidates for Ward Two previously, before I was wearing this hat, it was at the cutting edge of people's minds, and it has been in the works a very long time. Now that it is out in the open, people would like it to happen, like, now. But as we know, development takes time. And so, I think that is something that is a work in progress, and perhaps things have not been going as one may have hoped or wished. I'm going to bring up parking as an example, that as you may or may not know, as things come about and are developed, parking is a big concern for folks. And I believe they have, is it twelve hundred units opposed in parking down, and parking downtown is listed as two thousand. That is a big concern for residents, and it's a big concern for me. And so, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, I think what I'll, what I'll talk about is some of the incentives that we've been discussing around housing. So, you know, I, I mentioned before that we know we have a shortage of affordable housing, and when I first started serving on this subcommittee to look at all of the incentives we provide, that was one of the things that we started discussing, and we started to use more tools, like, I don't, you may be aware that we used our first housing tip this, within the last few years, which was great, because, you know, we've used that in commercial and to use it on housing, and to be able to provide that as an opportunity for development, and then as a result of that, on that project, forty percent will be set aside as affordable housing. But we started talking about it, and initially, we were just have this knee-jerk reaction of, yes, let's put something into effect without really talking to people who know a lot more than some well-intended council members or committee members. And so, we realized that, you know, when we said, okay, if we're going to do this tax, you know, like a tax incentive, what would that mean for the people that are doing the development, what would it mean for the landlords? Are we going to be asking people to collect income information about all of their residents, and have to track that? Or are they just saying it will be, if we have these units that are set aside, it will be at a certain level, and then you don't know who is going to rent it, it could be somebody that is, is in need of that, it could be that it's not. And so, we really took a step back and said, yeah, this is something where, again, we need to work with people and make sure that we are well-informed, and that the people who really have expertise in these areas can help to shape that policy and not just have something that, as I said, is well-intended, or really misses the mark.
Thank you. Yeah.
For me, it's just not being able to get individuals what they need and to organize collectively. We've tried several times to get my community together, community within the youth. They just, whether it's schedules, whether it's not agreeing, we're not able to do it, and I don't know what it is, because there's so much opportunity there for us to be an asset for the community, for us to work with different sectors, with the government, within organizations, to really be assets. We just have not been able to do it, and I hope to continue to try to do that, especially with young families, so they are able to stay in Morehead and contribute to the community, whether it's through engagements, starting businesses, buying homes, and being active in that, and then further, you know, further inspiring other individuals. So, that's something that I'm trying to do is collectively get individuals together to talk about issues and face challenges in our community. Thank you.
Ryan?
Well, Bryce, you, you ask tough questions, that's for sure, that's.
Sorry.
You know, like some of the other council members stated, that, you know, there's, it's tough to think of some of those initiatives, I'm sure there are, but I, where my thoughts kind of went is towards, and I'm not, I wasn't any part of the initial, obviously, in council with the Twenty-first Street underpass, but obviously, I supported that, that was a huge thing for Morehead. And at that time, I think the, the projected timeline was like two, two and a half years, if I'm not mistaken. And that's a long time, too, right? And it ended up being a lot longer than that, right? Four or five years, whatever it ends up being, but yes, there's road bumps, but I think, you know, gauging that, things may change throughout the projects like that. Because it took longer than normal doesn't mean it wasn't as successful. It's successful, it's opening up, it gets us those needs in the community to get around town a little bit better, or public safety. You know, I'm on board, yes, there were road bumps, but we just need to look forward, and it's open now, and it's, it's a success. And so, I just, you know, as, as you come to those road bumps, you expect those in big projects, and so you just have to keep looking forward and not worry about the hiccups that come along, so, thank you.
Thank you. And I should have, if anybody has any questions, just wait to me or something, text me if, if you're ready to throw one out there. Do you, so, going back to downtown and the economic development focus that's been going on there, do you have any suggestions for revitalizing Morehead's downtown that aren't already in the works? And then we'll start with you, Deb.
Yeah, well, I, I think we've got so much in the works. So, of course, you've probably all have seen our Yes 56560 campaign, and that is to use a Hassan sales tax to help to fund our new library and community center. And so, I think, you know, when we had discussions about that, first of all, I think that we, if you've spent any time in the library, you know that we need a new library, and for those of you who work in, you know, you know, repairing old buildings, that, that's, in terms of the red-rated buildings, that's one of the top ones. And so, we know that it's reached the end of its life, and we know that Morehead's growing, and we see people asking about things like having a downtown community center. And so, you know, having that when we need, but I think using the local option sales tax, I initially was skeptical because, you know, I'm not a big fan of sales tax, but I do appreciate that, first of all, food and clothing would be exempt. And beyond that, too, we did a study, and we found that thirty percent of our revenue from sales tax comes from outside of Morehead, and this is a library, a regional library and community center. To have that cost shared by people outside of Morehead is really valuable, and also, it helps to alleviate some of the pressure on the property tax. And that's a real, is if we want to do things that will help our growth by doing things like, again, investing in downtown with our partners, but not doing things that might slow it by putting undue pressure on our property.
Seattle?
So, you know, when we talk about the inevitable for downtown Morehead is the trend, right? The frustration that that creates for businesses and people to get there. So, having a community center and fostering and facilitating Morehead resident-owned businesses is really important around that. What other, other suggestions I've heard, we have a large college population, families that are there that want, that, that want to spend money on entertainments or amenities. So, attracting those students there that we have, you know, to colleges down the road from downtown is vital for businesses and for the community, and be able to show that they can stay and use their talents in Morehead even after graduation. Like, I've stayed in Morehead for that opportunity, but having a community center, I agree, will help facilitate that as well, and for families to, or family get together of all ages.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, and I, I agree, I appreciate Councilmember Deb White's comments about the library and community, community center. I, I think that will also ignite some additional growth downtown. We've needed a community center for a long time, just like what we've seen over here in Fargo, what's Fargo and other communities. And obviously, the library, the condition of the building, this is the way to go, right? And so, we want to get that down there and spur that, ignite that, that growth. But I also think that there's been a lot of focus on downtown development, and that's great. But I also think Morehead is spreading their wings a little bit as well, that it's not just maybe the downtown Main Avenue Center Avenue, First Avenue corridor, but look what's happening down south Morehead along A Street to Thirty-first Avenue. That's almost, we don't call it downtown, but in a way that's also becoming a downtown district, if you will. So let's also focus on the other areas as well. But obviously we still need to revitalize downtown, but pay attention to we might have our our second downtown, just like I I called it the old industrial park and the new industrial park. Similar to that. So focusing on areas as well, that's keeping our downtown thriving.
All right. Thank you, Heather. Thank you. I think you mentioned parking earlier is a concern, but I think having a nice mix small businesses and being, we've seen some ebb and flow in Morehead of small businesses, but having that mix with residential, but not only residential that you can rent, but residential that you can own and having meaningful properties that people can buy and having it not just those really sort of fancy expensive places that you can buy, but having some things that a variety of families and family sizes can own in that sort of centralized downtown location will be really meaningful to developing a very diverse, multi generational space. When I have been visiting with the the people who live in my ward, we have a lot of older families and older individuals who love their home and love living in Morehead, but perhaps want to own property, just not with the yard work in the snow, but all of that sort of removal. But we don't necessarily have a lot of townhomes or condos that are property that they would want to own that are barrier free or those types of types of types of home. And I see that downtown development as an opportunity potentially for a variety of homes and families. Thank you. So I agree. Go back to speaking and Nancy, did you have a question?
I do. Okay. Labor masters, employment service, I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but I'd like to know one thing that you're going to do because we asked you in the questionnaire, what you would do to help with the workforce shortage. One thing, what's the biggest one thing you could do to help me get more people?
As a council member?
Yep.
Is it? Okay.
Because that's what we asked him.
Yep. So this is one of the things I don't, I help connect people with jobs, with places they don't think they can work to help mobilize. And I do it, you know, kind of organically, like on my own, but it's about, you know, we have the communities in Morehead that don't think they can work in different industries, reaching out to those communities, helping them, or sometimes they can't, they're smart. People are smart. They're just, they don't have the ability to go through the paperwork. And what I have done is I've sat with individual and have filled out the paperwork for that and facilitated for that. And that in turn turns out to be a career for them and get them working and a lot, you know, get them into the industry and the community engagement aspect of it. But there is sometimes a barrier and just be motivated to go out there. So I think doing a lot of outreach for people to connect with the labor industry will be important. And it's something that the city can help in just later as well. Right. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, another tough question. You know, I don't know that anybody really has the the quick, easy answer on workforce shortages, right? So and I don't claim to either, but again, making connections and seeing what those are, working with organizations such as your team to figure out what those barriers are, what the issues are that those workforce shortages. You know, and so I wish I could come and wave a magic wand and have some of those answers, but it's just getting down and hearing what those issues are and listening to individuals or organizations to see how we can resolve those.
It can just why it's going to be riled up. And the needs in a labor shortage, we have a tri factor, workforce, housing, childcare and labor. But that's going to take that one. So I'm going to talk about the Hardina Academy. Because I believe that being able to sample those labor options and those trades is really important for our youth. And we have the Hardina option, which brings in people regionally in the summer, but we have now the Career Academy, which I think it can maybe focus that opportunity, knowing very little about Hardina, except the youth that I know that have experienced it and gotten scholarships and actually changed their minds about what they are doing with their future based on Hardina. And that is what I see because now they are outstanding individuals who are working in trades and providing like homes and working as skilled labors in our community. Like I just want to like sing it loud and proud for everybody. But when I talk to people, nobody knows about it. And so I think that if we can get more people there, which there are limited spaces in, but I love how you know, the costs have waived and people can get scholarships, but everybody loves that. And I think that is like a pipeline for addressing some of our labor shortage. So I don't know how we get more of that or work with things like the Career Academy, but things up, sorry. Just a point that is an HBA. It is HBA all over the place. And that's the fee, right? HBA sponsors. Oh, gosh, I didn't know that. It is outstanding. I love it. But I did know that the fee is covered by, it was, you know, a smaller, but it's covered by HBA and I absolutely love it. One of one of our member volunteers paid the bill for the registration fee. So but yeah, and thank you for just recognizing that. It's great to see that there are council members that are aware of the workforce efforts that we do. So appreciate that. Yeah, sorry.
So yes, and yeah, because it really is, you know, for workforce issues, we've got to talk about housing, we've got to talk about childcare. So I'll focus on the housing aspect again, that, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, it's not just low income, but workforce housing. And if we want more people to come to the Fargo-Morehead area to fill all these jobs we have, we have to have housing that they can afford to live in. And so that's where we need to be more creative and again, look at any tools that we can use to help further incentivize that kind of development. We were at a League of Minnesota Cities meeting this summer and they had developers there that were talking about that and said, we would, but look, we're not out here just for charity. You know, if we build something and then we end up going under because we can't do something that makes the, you know, makes financial sense, then we won't be around to do the next project. And so we have to be, you know, responsive to our partners to make sure that we can make these projects viable. And as I said, that's through a variety of different tools in the toolbox in terms of economic development incentives. But it also could be things like being more flexible about stuff so that as things, when things are rough, we know, hey, we got your back. And I love Dan Molly always talks about, you know, we've seen changes in the city of Morehead. This used to be a much harder place to work in. We still have work to do. But our motto has to be opportunities, not obstacles.
Thank you. Okay.
Bryce, I have just a quick question. Coming back, not necessarily housing related, but coming back to the downtown development and Ryan, your comments about 30th Avenue. You know, I I've always got the sense it's more aggressive that we're either trying to keep up or compare ourselves to Fargo and what they're doing in downtown. And I do believe that we should be complimentary in in the library and the members. But I've also always been very critical to say, don't give me an excuse to cross the interstate. And when I look at the development that's along the 30th Avenue, along the interstates as well, that is the very first opportunity people have to experience Morehead and there's no reason for them to stop. There's unless, I mean, yes, we have the noodles and company and a few other restaurants over there. But there's no reason to stop and to collect any of that. And actually, there really isn't anything until you get down to almost 45th Street before you really start to see the vibrancy. So why, why don't we also focus some time and energy to develop that? And I am concerned that we have a few apartment buildings now going in there, which that doesn't make people stop either. And so I I just think we're missing a golden opportunity there because we're so focused in on what Fargo has, which is a very vibrant downtown compared to finding our own niche. And that could be one of them as well. So I guess my question would be, how do we look at maybe finding our own niche and utilizing the other resources we might have that can make us marketable compared to Fargo?
Let's start with Ryan on that one. Right.
Sorry, that's tough.
No, no, that's, you know, they're they're good questions. I appreciate your comments and and that's not a new issue, right? That's been going on for years. And so again, I agree, an apartment building isn't going to stop somebody from, if you're coming into town and you're going to keep on going through. We do need, you know, places to live, obviously, but that's, but yeah, I I don't know. I mean, obviously visibility when you drive through on the on the interstate. Yes, you can see some of the businesses, but they're not facing the interstate. They don't catch your eye. And so I don't know if we need to look at that when we have these developments is 30th Avenue is facing to the south and kind of away from the interstate, right? And even on the north side, you drive through and you don't catch those restaurants maybe unless there's extra signage. So you know, again, it's just time and discussion on how we look at those developments and those opportunities in the future. So we can be be visible and market that.
Thank you, Heather. Yes. And absolutely, Trent. Yes. So I believe that the 94 corridor, as well as Highway 10, needs needs some development. So we have reasons to stop to draw people in. And there are these magical things happening, I cannot say. But we're absolutely, we're looking on them. And I I don't know that it's going to be particularly unique or niche like. But I I think like Ryan said, some signage is absolutely necessary, but it it goes beyond chain stores that that you can get noodles anywhere, although, you know, when they were closed, it was a sad day. But, you know, now that we are opening up, we're we're seeing more people out here about, you know, having that electric vehicle charging station. Yes. You know, we just need more reasons to stop. And I think being able to develop those businesses, draw those businesses and have those reasons. Having that, those Emory Apartments, they're having those new businesses develop on that particular side. We're we're rolling. They're working. It's coming, Trent. Just just do wait. Let's do wait. It's happening.
Twenty years.
All right. Next, again, this is my ward. Tonight, your Ward Three. So yeah, I'd love to talk about this because even if we look at where Emory Apartment is, that that building, it's, you know, we've got two things happening simultaneously. On place doing the housing and the commercial space. So we have this aging strip mall that has been an eyesore and they, you know, had had many empty spots in it. And they're breathing new life into that. And our conversations about that were, how will this be a place that will really draw people in? One is, because that's my ward, I talked to the neighbors and they would like a place that, you know, so they can walk to a coffee shop or walk to a restaurant. But also, again, if you have lots of things out in the front, there are some outdoor seating and places that people will see and it will draw them in. So that's part of the plan. So the look of that space will be very different than the typical old strip mall that we've had before. Then if we go over to the other side, one of the things that we've been doing is bringing together, not just between us and the developers, but the neighbors too, of having them work together. How do we use that space together? So when we put in that, when the entree puts in the apartment on the other side where the day's in is, they've been working very closely with the folks at First Presbyterian to have shared green space that will do things like they're looking at having some paths that will lead to, there's a holding area for water. But if they could make that a decorative space and have some seating and things like that, they also will have shared some community gardens and things like that. Then again, will be stuff that people from the neighborhood will will draw them to that area. And hopefully then as people come off the highway too, then they could see that and see it as a much more attractive area than it currently is.
All right. Thank you. Has seen. So I I, my parents live on that side and up A Street and I used to work there at that subway. And unfortunately, it has seen a lot of businesses close. And it's, there are challenges based in that area. It does have an opportunity for growth. And just making it visible is important. So having those charming coffee shops, those charming boutiques. I mean, that's been, that's what's been happening in Fargo. And we can certainly do that along 45th. They have little, you know, they have get togethers, fashion shows. So inspiring people to do it in that area of Warhead is important too, because it is expanding. It's growing and it's growing worse now. And you have a variety of different families that live there. It's really taking into that account and inspiring Warhead businesses to start and to make it look beautiful and helping the city facility that would be great to provide those services for people that live there. Wonderful. All right, going back to Heather. So the Morehead City Council members recently approved raising property taxes roughly 3% in the in the preliminary budget. What are your thoughts on that action and why or why not? In terms of you supporting it, if you did or if you didn't, why?
And so I believe that the property tax at just under 3% is a good compromise. The, there were three opportunities presented to City Council. And and the just under 3% is a way to approach many of the needs that were requested of the city. And if you look at historical increases for the city, and there have been some years that have been quite high and some that are quite low. And there's sort of a balance the citizens as well as the businesses. And if we have really low taxes, we're just sort of kicking things down the road for improvements that we really need to see and have like public safety, like roads, like forestry, many things that our citizens have been asking for and expect. Unfortunately, a lot of that reality is that we pay for those things with our property taxes. And so I think finding that balance was just under 4%.
And I do support. All right. Thank you. Yep.
Yes. And I will be completely honest about it of why I supported it because for me, it was about in particular public safety. So most of our budget is for personnel and the largest percentage of that is for police and fire. And we are down several positions in Morehead Police and it's been something that's been an ongoing issue. It's we're experiencing this all over the country. And we need to get a handle on it. And I've told people this, I remember Dave Eppinger talking about this before I ran for office and saying, are you going to wait until you have, you know, some tragic thing happen before we work on this? And so we've been working at trying to make sure that we can get a handle on this. And I have a lot of thoughts on it because I've worked in a program that has a law enforcement program for the last 22 years. And so I know some of the difficulties that they face. But one of the areas is we need to make sure that we are competitive because we are getting a lot of our officers coached by other law enforcement agencies. And so, yes, we were, this was one of the years where we were in contract negotiations and we were very clear that we wanted to make sure that we were supporting. And even then, though, we tried to be very cautious. The first budget that they came back with, we said, we understand you guys are being tight, but we need you to be tighter. And they came back and they cut things further and and but, you know, at a certain point, as, you know, my fellow council member said, we can't just kick the can down the road. And and some of the times when we're kicking the can, these are things that are putting our residents at risk. We are asking our officers to do too much and it's not right. And it's something that I feel very strongly about.
All right. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. So obviously, working families, you know, and taxes and increased taxes is certainly a strain, especially if you're fixed income. However, the city also needs resources to be able to upkeep the building of it and continue to build forward, including support for the infrastructure that's needed, such as the underpasses and all the, you know, other development that we want to foster. So it is necessary. However, it it really has to be taken into account, especially because of high cost of living. You know, I've had conversations where in Morehead is, it's affordable right now. It really is. And it really is as competitive as the other side of the river. It's a matter of keeping it competitive and affordable and having a good compromise to address the needs is good. So settling on a 3%, you know, like the council members did, I think it's a good compromise for continued development and to help with the infrastructure and the building of the community. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. And I echo a lot of the comments already up here that said by the by the other. Thank you. And I echo, uh, a lot of comments already up here that said by the, by the other candidates and, uh. Especially Deb White's comments about the public safety and Heather Niesmeyer's comments about the public safety, uh, needs. The three percent, um, as a citizen, uh, didn't raise any red flags. For me, I know that there always has to be a modest increase in that. And the fact of the matter is, we also have to look at consequences of our decisions too, that if we do kick that can down the road. There will be a year that it's not three percent. It might be five or six or seven or eight percent, right? And we don't, we don't want to do that either. But we also need to make, remain competitive. Um, I know, I personally know a lot of, uh. Employees in the police and fire departments and other departments within the city as well. And, um, I, I could tell you, it's. Uh, I don't want to use the word crisis, but, uh, there's a lot of opportunities for those employees to go elsewhere. And we spend a lot of resources upfront. To train and recruit and, uh, get these people here. We want to keep them there. And I think there's one way to keep costs down if we can retain those employees because it is. They're invaluable and a lot of resources. So, uh, I do support the three percent. I think council did due diligence on that. We all like to, uh, lower taxes, right? But again, going back to, uh, long-term consequences that this looks.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I have two, two questions left. Does anybody have a question before?
The last one.
Okay.
So, um. We do pay for forestry on our more public service bill. So that is regardless. Nobody will disagree with you on the fire and police department. What I've heard up here is I have not heard, uh, consideration into necessarily new housing. I've heard the justification of three percent increase. I've heard, um, this, this. It's, uh, you know, the sales tax deal. Look, I can sit here as a resident, business owner and employer in Morehead and tell you, I'm not opposed. To a community center, okay? I do have a couple, couple. Things that, uh. I need to keep my HBA hat on while I'm in here. So I, what I, what, what I'm looking for here is, I understand, I think everybody in here understands the need for. The, the public safety and everything, but I haven't necessarily heard from the four of you. What's going to be beneficial for future housing? In Morehead, other than incentives and programs and this and that. You got to understand that. There's an elephant in the room in Morehead and I haven't heard it come out of any of your four malls. Is that, look, it's seven percent income tax difference between states. Seven. So when you consider that. And our housing doesn't appraise the same as in Fargo. That gets to be a difficult situation. Frost death, the half cent sales tax, landing from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars on a new house on the, on the sales tax, the half cent sales tax. Which I don't think you'll find anybody, but. It's more of a statement than it is a question. Is that? All right, let me ask you this. As four people are going, are looking for election on City Council. With liquefy, liquidating. Some of the thirty plus, or I don't know exactly what the city of Morehead owns. Um, liquidating some of its properties. Like the green space for that epic project in the church, that's a tax burden on the taxpayer. That needs to be one or the other. So what I'm saying is these properties that are owned, would it be? Advantageous for the city to start liquidating some of its properties that are not producing taxes? And paying taxes because over thirty percent of the property tax in Morehead, or thirty percent of property does not pay property tax. So when you come for three percent, you're coming for seventy percent of us. So that, there's a little bit of difference here in that. I would like to see if it would be advantageous for the city to liquefy, liquidate some of its properties. To help keep the taxes, property taxes lower for new home, new projects, new stuff like that. Rather than a TIF incentive or whatever, because the city gets on the hook for that.
So is that considered infill too, if you have a question you're asking? Okay.
It's kind of a loaded question because I have to keep my HBA hat on to my resident seat hat on. So.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
What does infill?
Um, where there is, uh, properties that are redeveloped within the community versus, um, fresh land or. I'm not using the right word. Undeveloped land.
Yeah. Right, new development.
Which would create growth for your community outside and further your footprint. So infill would be the redevelopment of something. Um, and do we serve?
I think it's me, right?
Oh, yeah.
Can I, can you go?
Statement. I just, I wrote notes down. I'm trying, I gotta keep two hats on here. I'm trying to keep one on.
Right. No, Mike, I think we're with you a hundred percent. Well, at least I know, I'm with you a hundred percent. And I think there's stuff that we have, just haven't touched on. But yeah, I, I mean, the four years that I've been there, we have been working on loaning a lot of property. And so that's where, you know, we sold. The Ushers Building that we had, we sold the sports center. We, um, tried to get, we sold the, there was a piece of land that we had. That was over on Fourth that now we've sold that to Epic. Um, the land that I was talking about down, um, where they're doing between First Presbyterian and that's not our, if there isn't any like, uh, public land other. There may be a right of way where we have drainage and stuff like that. So nothing that we could build on.
Okay.
Because that's what we really did. And beyond that too, that's where like EDA, we've been talking a lot about how do we get more, um, things on the tax roll? Because not only, you know, if we only, but, you know, it's nice that we have colleges and universities, but we have, you know, very large nonprofit areas that aren't contributing to that too. And that puts more, so we've also talked about it a lot with Macara. So, and of course, you know, we're just expanding that too. Of, of now we've got that, that area is really heating up. And the great thing about it is as we just did this, as we're working on these expansion, that's more things that are on the tax rolls too. So yeah, we really want to do that. And I think, you know, from coming in with Chris Volker, um, and now through Dan Molly, that's what. One of the things that they've been really pushing is anytime we've got stuff, it's like, why are we holding on to this? And it, and I'll say one last thing too, even the downtown, um, uh, with the Morehead Center Mall. Our big thing has always been like, how do we get out of the way? Like, like even he's worked asked about City Hall and we're like, put us wherever you want. I mean, we don't care. The biggest thing is let's, let's work at the development first. Like what's going to work to bring in development in that area? And if that means us totally moving out and getting a different city hall, so be it if it means we fix up this, but. Our, our first, our starting point has been how do we get out of the way so that growth can happen? And so. Yeah, we, I, I really do think the council has been behind that. And yeah, you know, um, we're not where we want to be yet, but that's, that's what we want to do.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, the single family homes are the ideal for all families. It's true, right? One of the hindrance, I think, is a special assessments. In the taxes. It's a huge trigger shot for people to go and go into those new neighborhoods, right? And it, it's, it's something unique to this region because other areas of the country, they don't really have that separated. So, um. It, it, that is why I see is one of the hindrances is that huge, uh, special assessment and that falls. Part of it fall, does fall on people. In new neighborhoods and old neighborhoods that get assessed, I ignore Morehead more right over and over. So. Making Morehead an investment area for people to come in and buy a plant is important. So they, uh, pay their share of taxes and help it develop. So that would be something that would be beneficial for the residents, for the city of Morehead. Uh, in terms of economic development and housing development, the burden of taxes is involved on the rest.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah. Thank you for, uh, your comments. And I think it comes down to, uh. And I don't, I don't mean to minimalize this by any means, but it comes down to a little bit of the simple math, right? So what you're saying is seventy percent is paying for like a hundred percent of the bill, right? And it shouldn't be a seventy, one hundred. And it's never going to be one hundred, right? But, um, yeah, as a, as a, whether you're a business owner or a community member, um, you're paying for seventy percent, you know, you're paying for. That full, that full deal. And you want to spread that out, get that up to seventy-five or eighty, whatever that magic number is. You know, it's a, it's, it's a work in progress and it's a collaboration. So it's great. I, I don't have the answer for you, but I, I agree. That we do want to spread that out, uh, much higher. I mean, if we're holding on properties and we're not taking that, that income. Um, you know, it might not have to be a three percent, but reality is, it is a three percent where we sit today. But it would be nice to be a two and a half or two percent if we could get that other income in there. So, uh, I appreciate your comments. Uh, look forward to listening more about some of those concerns through that. Uh, that's information I'd like, you know, like to know some of that, those deep numbers like that. So thank you. That's great.
Heather. If, if we could change the difference between, I, I think that's a huge challenge. I do think that working with our state legislators on the difference between. Um, our city's challenges and the rest of our state is really something to continue to press. Our border city challenges, uh, like to their forefront. Um, and I think as far as a city, I think having, uh, Dan Molly and working with him as our city manager. Really has been a shift and change. And we have been able to offload a number of city, um, properties. And I think there's even one on our agenda for this coming Monday. Um, and so I think. We will continue to do that. And I support that because as Ryan said, as Deb said, you know, I echo a lot of what Deb said. Um, moving a lot of those things along just increases the ability to balance sort of that tax equation. And again, I think the tax equation, myself as a citizen and as a city council member. Um, it should not be on, you know, property ever since, and citizens, it should also balance between small businesses as well. Um, and we can't have that if we have no buildings for them to, or properties for them to own and develop. And we need to free up some of that land. I think our car is seeing some development, but we also need more small, um, homes to be purchased and built. As well as businesses, business opportunities. So I think it's a number of things. So I do appreciate your comments. Let's free up the land and make, make buildings built.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, well, I'm going to skip my last question since you started. I think you're a very. Yeah, it's a very good question. Yeah. Um, actually, and I, I wanted to say before we, we go into closing comments, but. Um, you know, Mike was bringing up some really good points because, um. Years ago, uh, in my early years of work, working at the HBA, I've been here for thirty. Somewhere around thirty years or later more than that. But, um, getting so old, I can't remember. But it, the city of Morehead used to have the reputation of being very difficult to, um, go into the planning departments and, and the. The building officials department was, um. Just a little bit unapproachable. And they, the city worked really hard over the years to make it a better place. And I know that there are things that the state, um, there are things that. Because of the state of Minnesota, make it hard for a city to, to bend and be flexible on things. But, and then there are things that a city can do and. Um, they certainly have been doing things, the city, and I'm thinking of Dan and the city council. Um, but, and Lisa, um, Boney and others that have been wonderful to work with and Derek, uh, from EDA. So. I know that there's lots of efforts and we're very proud to be a partner in that, any place that we can. So whether it was legislation. Um, which ended up going to the Department of Labor for the Frost Free. I'm sorry, the Frost Death, excuse me, I have Frost Free Foundations in my head too. Um, and, um, but, and there's still work to be done on that because. When it got to the, the billing official, we're still running into roadblocks on that Frost Death and that, um, the savings still isn't. Quite there, making it a competitive to the sister city that upward on the other side of the river. So. Um, so there's lots of work to be done, um, but that attitude is great to hear that. You want business over there and you want commercial business, you want, um. New construction development. And we also are very appreciative that the. Do your property tax, the rebate program came back as well. So that, that is really huge as well. So thank you for that. So, um, we'll do closing comments and, um, I think it's, uh, one minute for that as well, right? So, and then we go back to Sehameen again, right? I'm, I'm staying in order on that.
Exactly.
So if you want to start with the closing. Be great.
So, you know, having these conversations with all of you, I think, um, you're vital to the growth of Morehead. And having partnerships with organizations such as HBA is really important to continue that and the concerns you have. Um, there are a lot of opportunities. Um, although sometimes this, the, the resources of Morehead are strained, we can work through that and be able to allocate resources. To address the public safety concerns once, when Morehead is spreading, um, widely with, you know, both south, you know, south and north side. Um, and then being able to have this partnership and the approachability within the city is important. As well as supporting the infrastructure and making sure not most of that burden doesn't fall on residents. It's been happening over and over again as I have conversations with people. Um, paying attention to who is investing in Morehead and make sure they have the best interest of the residents as well. Is really important and are open to collaborations. And like I said, I really about being approachable, being collaborative, doing the research. Um, having that partnership with businesses, with residents to continue the momentum to move more it forward. Thank you. Ryan?
Oh, thank you to the Home Builders Association here for having us, um, and asking these, these questions, obviously tough questions and comments. Uh, and I think I made it pretty clear where, where, where I stand in public safety and law enforcement, that kind of thing. Uh, but to be honest, you know, if, if I get elected or, uh, if CM gets elected, we both are in a position there. We, we need to grow ourselves, including, you know, to hear that information and make that connection. So it's great to be here. Hear some of those, uh, those comments and, uh, work with, with, uh, groups such as the HBA to, to address those. So this is a, a great opportunity. I, I learned from a fellow council member and a council member, but, uh, hope to be obviously, uh, things like the Hardina Program that you talked about, which, um. The comment was made, a lot of people hadn't heard about that, including myself. So I'm growing here today with, learning some of that, uh, those issues, but, uh. So thank you for the questions, comments. Uh. Please reach out to me if you have any follow-up after this, but, uh, I really enjoyed, uh, being here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to thank HBA again for having us here today and for writing lunch. And, and I. I want to say that my biggest belief is community engagement. And I think that community incorporates. All individuals that, um, make our community great, which includes the builders, the developers, um. Citizens. And, um, I believe in advocating for all individuals to engage with our community and lifting voices up. And as part of that, I think, uh, we heard lots of concerns today of, of riding issues. And I think that we can work together to make, um, you know, Morehead home for so many. And you provide a service and, um, a great deal of wealth to our community. And, um, I would love to continue. Doing that. And so if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out. Elizabeth has my contact information. So please do that. Um, you know, even if I don't get elected, I'm in office until December thirty-first. So let's be magic.
Uh, earlier this year, we were talking to Kevin Barker and I took the time just to thank him because he's obviously been a great partner in Morehead. And, you know, I thanked him for the work he's doing. And he was very like upfront about it and said, I wouldn't be doing this if it didn't make sense for me, you know, like. You know, it's, I'm not doing this out of charity. And I think that it was really important to look at that because I, I know, as you said, you know, that's not, you know, Morehead wasn't always a very open place. And, and we've had a lot of things that were a lot of roadblocks that kept, um, kept things from happening that we wanted to happen. And I want to be humble enough to recognize that it's not just like that we're better than how they were because we make a lot of mistakes too. And it really, again, it comes down to listening, to really, you know, talking to others and finding out what are the things that we are doing wrong? What, what could we do better? What could we do to really, again, work with you to make these things that we want to see happen, happen? And, you know, I'm a professor at MSUM and one of the things I had my students doing in classes, I had them go to, um. Evaluate kind of like secret shoppers of our city government and have them evaluate our webpages, the information we provide, come to our meetings and look at. What are some of the things that we do that might be unintended obstacles or sends messages that, no, you're, you know, we don't want to hear from you. And I think that that's, you know, we need to, because very often it's not that we are better than how they did it in the past necessarily. It's like, we're all kind of blinded to these things and you need to take the time and listen to people and really find out. That, you know, find out those things so that you can make those improvements. And I'm glad that we're starting to do it, but really again, it comes down to. Listening and working with partners such as you. And we couldn't, we would not see the kind of growth that we're having, um, right now if it weren't for those partnerships.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Um, well, and to wrap up, um. We so appreciate your time and, uh, it's fun getting to know all of you. And hopefully you know a little more about the HBA too and. Um, it challenges or like I said, we are a resource here for you. Um, and we want to partner and collaborate. Um, and we want to partner and collaborate with our city officials, elected officials, um, staff, uh, community involved individuals, so anytime, feel free to look us up. And, um, just one comment too on the, um, uh, I've heard it again and again in a lot of our meetings recently too, about public safety and, and how important, it is so important to our community and what will help all of those officers and, um, different areas, the emergency facilities and different things that is homeownership. And homeownership is a huge contributor to making strong neighborhoods. And, um, and that's the challenge, is that we, in the industry, we battle, uh, the affordability challenge every day. Um, in every sector, if you're talking about the homelessness, um, those that are trying to, they're making their way out of homelessness areas, uh, to the new college graduates, the young families who are trying to make the jump from multi-family into homeownership, existing housing, which then can lead to new construction and moving up. And so, um, it's really important, but that is, that's getting to be a much higher jump. But that, that sector, that new construction sector is also an economic engine for the region and for your community. So there's lots of good things about having new construction of residential and commercial going on and, and building that tax base that Mike keeps referring to, to spread the tax burden further and further. So anyway, so I appreciate your ear on that. Um, and thank you again, I, it's a pleasure to meet all of you, we appreciate your time and we wish you the best in the election. Looking forward to working.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.